And that's my problem. Is that, Lynn, is that gonna do anything for Coltrun Web though? And if that's the case, then I may have a real problem.
Well, we don't have a specific project. It probably is not going to be demolition of the entire building that we talked about in rebuilding last week. Because, I mean, that, the placeholder was eight million for that. Well, if we're gonna lump this together, I mean, it's possible they may get, still get eight, and the other two get a portion after that. But that's, I guess that's what I'm asking, that Mr. Whitkey and Dave work through between now, if this, if the commissioners decide they want to do it, and then it goes to the ballot and passes, well, then the clock is now running, that we've got to figure out what exactly does that look like. But that goes back to what Mr. Harrison said of having sort of a roadmap. So we're sort of doing two things simultaneously. It would be up to Mr. Whitkey, I think, between now and May to give us some sort of indication of what we think we can do at the three schools, what would make up the 12 million five. Or if we leave the numbers off, it's not 12 million five, it's, we're trying to figure out $60 million worth of projects. So, not to cut you off, hang on one second. Does that, does that-
The reason I'm saying that, now, you don't quite understand, to get people to come out to say this, you've got to say, "I'm going to do something at Coltrun Web." And, and that's why, that's why I want to say, and to get people to come out and vote, or to come out and support a bond referendum, you gotta tell them what you're wanting to do. And you're not telling them what you're going to do. You're not- Not saying what you're going to do, and what you're going to do at Coltrun Web, or what you're going to do at, at the Glenn Center. I would much rather be able to say, "I'm going to do Mount Pleasant Middle School. I'm going to do a new elementary school that's going to replace Royal Oaks. That way, those parents know this. And I'm going to do something at Coltrun Web." They know this right off of the bat. Now, with what is proposed right now, nobody, you're leaving three groups of parents, or three groups of individuals, that may not get anything at all. And to me, as a voter, that would upset me.
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Harrison.
If I may, it seems that if the resolution stated explicitly that renovations, or call it what you want, at the Glenn Center would be done first, so that the Glenn Center is a facility that can, in stages, take students from the Glenn, from the Coltrun Web facility, while Coltrun Web is being worked on. I think the voters would understand that we're fixing up the Glenn Center so that it can be the educational facility for the Coltrun Web students while the Coltrun Web building is being fixed.
But you don't have money for it. Do you think it could work?
Okay. Now, here, here's the conundrum, because Carolyn and I hear what you're saying. But we also could just say, instead of 60, let's call it 80, and then we got a lot more projects that we could just throw out there. But we're trying to juggle having a reasonable number, knowing there's other entities coming, Kannapolis, the county itself. And if we, if we only had the first three listed, and, I mean, you've said, we've, we've left out, if we, if we lump that together, they all feel left out. Well, if we only have the three listed, well, we've left everybody out. I mean, we're, we're trying to juggle a fine line between having enough projects that seem doable, or sometime in the future, we're going to be able to do them on, on the list, and that's why we, we kind of swerved into the items, without, say, you know, without coming up with a massive number, that's not going, I mean, quite frankly, it's just not gonna fly, in the, in the, in the climate that, that we're under. So, I, I guess, so we can keep moving, I, what, you're, the question was whether you want the numbers listed or not, but you, you kind of went backwards on me a little bit. You would rather go back and leave the numbers, but have a larger number at Coltrun Web? Or are you saying that we've got to have a specific plan to say, "Here's what we're doing at Coltrun," or "at the Glenn Center," or "at Central Cabarrus?" Can you, give me a brief of where you are?
My thing is, I would rather, because it sounds like you're not gonna have enough to do anything really at Coltrun Web. I mean, anything of significance at Coltrun Web.
Okay. That's where, I'm sorry to cut you off, but now, let's let Mr. Whitkey chime in on, on his thoughts at Coltrun Web.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to go back to what Mrs. Carpenter was talking about earlier. We, we do not have some very vital pieces of information on our schools. We don't have a facilities assessment on any one of our schools, except for the experiences of places like Mount Pleasant Elementary, where a study has been done, dated all by, you know, by many years. At least, it's sort of set the stage for what was needed in Mount Pleasant. But if you look at Coltrun Web, or if you look at the Glenn Center, or if you look at Central Cabarrus High School, none of those facilities have really had a most, a recent, complete, and detailed assessment done. That's kind of step number one. Step number two is doing things like an owner should, which is to do a survey, get geotechnical information, topographic information, utilities information, and then hire a design firm to study, not design necessarily, but study, what are the possibilities, and what, what are the costs of those possibilities? Long story short, you, you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, Union County. They spent, I think, just shy of $300,000 to have facilities assessments done of all of their schools, going back a number of years. But that's become a very vital part of their strategic plan. And you really need that, because you have to draw a baseline somewhere. And right now, we don't have that drawn, we don't have that assessment done in detail of any of our schools. And that's, that's something, I agree, needs to be paid with cash, or short-term money, not long-term bonded funds. And the same is true, really, of what I'd like to say is, is our approach that we should take now. My recommendation is not to define, not to define in such detail efforts at any one school, when we haven't done the studies, to justify those claims or those requests. Put the 60 million in, with the caveat that we will hire the design firms, we will do the assessments, and we will have more detailed information when bond time comes, when voting time comes. Because I agree that there's an importance to being able to say, "Mount Pleasant, this is what we're offering your community," and so forth down the line. And it, it helps build voter support, in the long run, when there are more specifics. And that's, that's when Dave Burnett spoke with you earlier, you know, he talked about looking down the road, strategically planning when additional bond referendums might be necessary. It's not to say that we're gonna need that money a specific year, but it's to tell other voters who might not have a project that's on this list right now, that something more will be coming to address your needs. But we have to take step one, bond number one, bond referendum number one forward.
Yeah, and I guess step number one is kind of where we are, and I want to go back-
Absolutely.
Ms. Carpenter, I think what, the way to answer what you said your concern was, is to go back, the original question was, "Do you want the numbers listed or not?" And I'm gonna take your answer to be no. That way, all of the projects are listed, but they're not tied, so nobody can say, "Well, golly, we're down here at the bottom for 12.5, we're not gonna get anything." Because I think you make a valid point there. If you look at three schools and 12.5, yeah, how far is it gonna go? Well, hopefully, we will know something, we will be able to identify big enough projects that will make an impact on the STEM program at Coltrun Web inside what we have. And if, you know, the 21.5 for elementary school, that's higher than what we're asking for now, but that's three, that's a different bid climate and a different economy, three years down the road. Whatever, if we don't list the numbers, I guess then, we've got the flexibility to move the money around. So, I'm gonna take your answer as to leave the, leave the dollar signs off. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
And, and that's where, I just want to make sure something works while it's done. I would much rather have Coltrun Web, I would much rather have Coltrun Web and more, Coltrun Web and Central, and leave off the Glenn Center, because you're already hitting the inner city with Coltrun Web and Central, and you're covering more of the county, because you're hitting that with Coltrun Web. Follow what I'm saying? You're heading for the geographical area.
I'm with you, and that's, okay. Mr. Schumaker, numbers or no numbers?
No numbers.
No numbers. Mr. Schu, you were, you made the motion, or not the motion, but you made the suggestion in the first place, so I'm gonna go no numbers.
No numbers for me.
Okay. David?
No numbers.
And Jeff?
I agree, keep it flexible.
Okay. So, we have answered the question. Right now, we've got a bond resolution at $60 million that we are not gonna specify those numbers, but we're gonna list those projects, as we've talked about. The next thing we need to discuss is whether we want to include the verbiage that says, "Mount Pleasant Middle, our intention is to build it on that site," whether we want that listed on the, the bond, or just have it listed as, "Replace Mount Pleasant Middle." I believe Mr. Schu has a comment.
I do, and what I wanted to, you know, have no problem with Mount Pleasant and the elementary, that's no problem, but I think, we're all saying the same thing. Ms. Carpenter, you're right there with us, you're saying the same thing. We're just trying, we're going around her elbow to get to her nose to say the same thing. It's $60 million to start with, cut and dry. That's what we've already agreed on, is cut and dry. Mr. Whitkey agreed, what you said was very eloquent, and was right on money, 60 million. So, the first two items is out of the equation already. So, I think where the real problem is, is the wording. The wording in item number three. And so, what we need to say there is, it needs to be the Coltrun Web Elementary School, the Central Cabarrus High School, the Glenn Center, and capital improvements, including roofs, at various schools in the Cabarrus County School District. And I believe that will cover all of those things, because there might be another pro- because we can't forget about the roofs, guys. That's not a service. That's, that there is a need, that's not a want, that's a need.
Let's just call it a renovation.
Well, renovation, that's what I'm saying, capital improvement, same thing. So, if you capitalize on those words, this capital improvements, including roofs, in all of these buildings, then there may be something else that pops up. Mr. Whitkey only has so much money set aside for emergency funds. I believe we asked last year for the commissioners, and if I'm wrong, please tell me, we asked them to give us $250,000 to set aside in an emergency maintenance fund, and I don't think we got that, did we?
We didn't.
We didn't get it. So, see, we don't have emergency funds setting around, where that if, whatever goes out, well, that comes out of his, his operating budget for facilities and maintenance. And so, what I'm saying, there might be something that pops up somewhere else that we didn't know about, that we have to take care of. So, if we put it, capital improvements, roofs at various schools throughout the Cabarrus County School District, then that'll cover all of that. And we know, and specifically going into it, we're gonna work on Coltrun Web, we want to do some capital improvement, capital improvement at Central Cabarrus, and also at the Glenn Center. But I think we need to be very cautious, though, as to how much money we put into the Glenn Center, and also at Central, knowing that we got these roofs and Coltrun Web to deal with all at the same time. Because Coltrun Web's gonna be the biggest chunk of this money, anyway. And so, we have to keep that in mind. So, there's not gonna be a lot of money to go around, but you'll be hitting more of the schools doing it that way, and covering the bases, I believe.
If I could just clarify, 250,000 does exist as an emergency fund.
Did they give that to us in this last budget?
No, I believe, it's an internal cost, I mean, eternally funded from-
I was thinking that we asked for a specific, so that would free up your money.
Right, no, Kelly, is that-
Ms. Clutz, you may need to come to the podium and key up. I was thinking, see, this money comes out of your budget, to my understanding.
We did allocate approximately $250,000 of fund balance for an emergency pot of, of funding for maintenance. We did, we did not receive additional funds from the county for that purpose.
Well, that's what I was thinking. We asked for it, but they didn't think we needed it, so we took it upon ourselves to take it from our own fund balance, so Mr. Whitkey would have something to fall back on. Has that proved to be successful for you, Mr. Whitkey? This is, I know that's straying, but has that proved to help you on some emergency-type things that, that just popped up?
Yes, very definitely. There are things that happen, as you know, you wake up in the morning, and suddenly the world has changed a bit, and some, something went boom in the night.
Well, well, that was a good thing. That's a good thing that we did that-
Absolutely.
But it would have, really, it's the commissioner's responsibility, and, you know, just like when we bought the computers back in the summer earlier for the technology, it came out of school funds, due to flexibility, due to savings, that where we cut every corner we could, but yet kept the quality. And, and so, that's where that money that we're talking about came from.
Yes, sir.
So, anyway, there's where we are. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Let's, 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 let's address the site portion, and then we'll, we'll get into the wording, and when we get into the wording, we'll, we'll address what Mr. Schu, the comments that, that he just made. So, with that being said, I think, my intention, I mean, I've looked at the study, I, I think we've talked about it in subcommittee, that we would like to put the school, new school on the old site, so we do not have to purchase land, there's a plan out there, the town has looked at. But, you know, it's been years since that plan was created. Todd, did you do that plan? How long is that, do you know? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, how long has that been? 2007 is my rec, okay. Okay, that, that's, that's what I've kind of thought I remembered seeing on it. So, I mean, it's, it's six years, almost seven years old. So, yeah, there it is, 2007, November 7th. So that, you know, I, I think it, it's probably in our best interest to look at that specifically, because the land and the infrastructure, utilities, and whatnot are already servicing the, the site. But I don't know if we really want to commit to it on the, on the bond. Rob has, has mentioned that some feedback from the, the community of, "Hey, we want to have some input," and I think we absolutely do want them to have input. So, you know, I know that previous boards to ours have discussed this quite, quite a bit. I'm, I'm not 100% sure, or I have a strong feeling, whether we leave it on or off. My instinct at this moment is that, that we do not specify the site, even though I think that's really what our intention is. Rob, you have anything further to say?
I mean, it very well may go in that spot, but I think if, by putting it, saying that we are gonna put it there, it doesn't give them the opportunity to provide the input. And we're not providing exact sites for any of these other schools, so I think it's, it'd be a good idea to just leave it off.
So, leave it off. Carolyn, what do you think?
Well, I'd say the same, just we're saying we're replacing it.
Okay.
But my feeling, I think we need, because again, we'd have to put money for land, and we have not included that in that total.
Barry, leave off?
Yeah, just put a period after built.
Okay. Mr. Schu, I know you were here when a lot of that discussion, and you're adamant about the, what the intention of the previous board, not the one before this, but even prior to that.
Well, it was in 2000, 2008, I guess it was, but what I vaguely remember was this room full of people from Mount Pleasant, you know, and Mr. Whitkey, I'm not sure if he was with us then or not, but I vaguely, I'm not sure anybody's here, except maybe Ms. Probst, Ms. Clutz, you know, I'm sure, you know, Kathy was here at that time, and Carolyn, we, we remember, I remember seeing this room full. I've talked to a number of, of the people that live in Mount Pleasant, and that's been their preference all along. But here's a thing that I won't remind all of us about, is, it's not, this is not really the time. I mean, it would be nice to have it on there as site, that would show the community that it is our intentions to do that. I think it's, everybody knows that that's our intentions, but it's not necessary that we put it on there at this time, simply because there'll be another time. Our next obstacle, this is the first obstacle, getting this board to approve a $60 million request to the commissioners through a bond resolution. This is the first step. The second step's gonna be the commissioners looking at it, and sometime, and I said this a little earlier, or at least I alluded to it, they're gonna call on us and say, "All right, boys, here we go." Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, we got Ms. Carpenter here. She reminds me that there's one of her still here.
I'm still here.
Yeah. So, anyhow, they're gonna wanna say, "What are you gonna do with this $60 million?" They're not just gonna stamp it, they're gonna wanna know what we're gonna do. And at that time, between now and that time, we can be a little bit more specific, gotta give Mr. Walter time to tell the Mount Pleasant Town Council to get us a resolution, which is what they told me they would do if they needed it, and it's pretty apparent that we do need that now, if they're gonna want to have that school put there. But we'll be able to discuss all of this at some point. It's not gonna affect the $60 million one bit right now. It's not gonna affect anything. Just like I said a while ago about the listing the three things out, it's $60 million, and what we put down, if, which we done said, we didn't want no numbers, but it may fluctuate one way or the other. We may find out that we don't need as much here as we thought we would, and vice versa. But the bottom line is, it's $60 million for schools, replacement schools, renovations, roofs, capital improvements in various schools in the Cabarrus County Schools District. That's what it boils down to. So, you know, when it comes to putting on site, I first thought that was the right thing to do, but I've found out now that it's, it could go either way, because it's not needed. We'll have that conversation at some other point, with all the specifics of what's gonna happen with this money, when and if it's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Harrison, you, quick comment on yea or nay, including the site?
Yea on striking the words "on the same site" from the Mount Pleasant line, and, of course, encouraging the town of Mount Pleasant to get to us a resolution that explicitly gives us the town's preference on what site to actually target going forward. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. And Jeff?
What he said.
Okay, fantastic. All right. We have, we have resolved that. Now, it's time to see how close Sarah was paying attention. And let's start, let's, let's, let's do this. I think Barry had it listed pretty well, and let's, let's kind of backtrack a little bit and see. We are not gonna list the site, we're not gonna list the numbers, we are going to list Mount Pleasant Middle School replacement, replacement in Royal Oaks vicinity, and then Coltrun Web, Glenn Center, and Central Cabarrus. Worded as Mr. Schumaker, lay it out for us a little bit, and then we'll see if we like the way that's, the direction that's going.
Sorry, that, for number three, or whatever else we wanna call it, but anyway, it'd be "Replace Mount Pleasant, comma, Replace Royal Oaks, comma, and then Capital Improvements, Capital Improvement Projects Related to Coltrun Web, Glenn Center, and Central Cabarrus High School." And just leave it at that.
Okay, so that's just capital improvements to Coltrun Web-
Capital Improvement Projects Related to Coltrun Web, Glenn Center, and Central Cabarrus.
Okay.
And then we'll do more of it.
Did you have more than that, or do you think it needs, okay, go ahead.
I, I did, and I wanna make sure we're talking about in the bottom portion of the resolution, where we list numbers one, two, and three. And then we'll obviously need to go back and beef up the whereas provisions, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And you, and Mr. Schumaker had wanted to add a couple of wherés, you've got those?
Right. I, I think, I either have them, or I have something that I think would be close, and I'd like to propose to you all, and see if we're in agreement. But so if I understand, at the bottom of the resolution, after the "now therefore," it's gonna read, one, Replace Mount Pleasant Middle School, two, Replacement in Royal Oaks vicinity, and three, Capital Improvement Projects Related to Coltrun Web, comma, Central Cabarrus, comma, and Glenn Center. My question becomes, that does not address the language raised by Mr. Schu about the roofs, and I wanted to see if you wanted to include that.
I'm getting to that, but quickly, the replace, do we need, does the elementary school need to be in item number two? It just says "Replacement in Royal Oaks vicinity," but it doesn't really say what we're, what we're doing.
It says "Replacement Elementary School."
Elementary School replacement. And then, instead of Central Cabarrus, it should say Central Cabarrus High School, just to use the formal name.
Absolutely.
Now, as far as the roofs go, and last week, our initial discussion had roofs on it, we talked about it, we did talk about pulling that out, and that we had had some conversation with the, the county of going ahead and identifying the most pressing needs of something that's currently leaking, so that we can get on it and not have roofs tied to the bond, but get a life cycle together, or maybe a, a document that has the estimated useful life, and what the remaining useful life is, so that we can get on a cycle, and they'll know when it, when the roofs are coming to them. In fact, Ms. Dubois told us, and Mr. Downs told us at our chair of vice chair meeting, they look, they start seeing that five years out. And I, you know, to me, that's reasonable. If we can get them documents that show our capital needs coming five years out, you know, that, that's, that's a reasonable request, and at least gives them some heads up of what's coming. But as far as the roofs being listed are in this verbiage, I think we're okay listing just capital improvements, what was the, the phraseology I-
Capital Improvement Projects.
Capital Improvement Projects at Coltrun Web, the Glenn Center. Should we, is there, is that the formal name of that building? Is there something else that we need to be using?
Old Concord High School.
Old Concord High School, instead of Glenn Center, and Central Cabarrus High School. Does it need to say both? Glenn Center slash Old Concord High School?
Old Concord High School.
Okay. You okay with that?
Do you all capitalize the "O" for "old"?
Renovation, the same thing?
Capital Improvement-
In renovation, are they really the same thing? Are they in the same classification? Or would you be renovating, could you be renovating something, and it not be capital? It's what I'm, I mean, could you renovate something, and it not actually be in a capital class?
Well, if we're talking about having something on a bond referendum, it's gonna be a project big enough that it's gonna be considered a capital project. I mean, technically, you pull carpet up, put something down, you can call that a renovation, but we're, if we use the word "capital projects," the connotation is that they are larger, multi- hundred million, hundreds of thousands, yeah, a hundred million, woo, where'd that come from? Hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars' worth of capital projects. Does that answer your question?
And the understanding is that we would make renovations to the Glenn Center for immediate, as well as future usages.
Yes, the, the thought there is of the surge space, while we're addressing needs inside the city limits of Concord for our elementary schools, and for the future arts magnet that we hope to be able to provide, that complements what we're doing on the STEM science side for the art students, or potential art students in Cabarrus County. So, with all of that said, we need a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, but do you need to read through the entire motion, I mean, the entire resolution for us?
If you would, I think that would be the appropriate thing to do. So, starting from the top of the resolution, I'm gonna review the whereas paragraphs and let you know where I believe we've made changes. First paragraph, whereas the enrollment, I don't see that one as changing.
Okay.
Second paragraph, whereas Cabarrus County is obligated, that one stays the same. Third paragraph, whereas adequate school facilities, that stays the same. Fourth, whereas Cabarrus County Schools is currently identified, I believe that can stay the same, based on our discussion. Following paragraph, where it is, it is necessary, that stays the same. Next paragraph will now read, whereas Mount Pleasant Middle School is badly deteriorated, and a replacement needs to be built. And it'll end there. Following paragraph, due to the additions we've just made, it's my recommendation that we say, whereas portions of Royal Oaks Elementary School, comma, Coltrun Web Elementary School, comma, Central Cabarrus High School, comma, and the Glenn Center, parentheses, open parentheses, Old Concord High School, are badly deteriorated. Final, whereas a number of schools throughout the county are in need of renovation, that stays the same, and then the remainder of those stay the same until we get to the "now therefore" section, where we insert the new list of three, without dollar amounts. One, Replace Mount Pleasant Middle School. Two, Replacement Elementary School in Royal Oaks vicinity. Three, Capital Improvement Projects at Coltrun Web Elementary School, comma, Central Cabarrus High School, comma, and Glenn Center, parentheses, Old Concord High School, close parentheses.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, board members, that's, that's where we are with the resolution. Did anybody hear anything that needs to be corrected?
Well, somewhere we need to explicitly say $60 million, right? Because right now, we-
That, I left that off, that's there at the very end, as well as in the "now therefore" paragraph.
The announced, the request, "Replace bond referendum valued at $60 million."
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay, we've got the 60 million. Board members, I'd like a motion to approve the resolution, as we have discussed, and as our attorney has just read.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and thankfully, we are done talking about that for tonight. Now, that was, good work, board members. That's an important thing that we're gonna have to, in front of us, and I appreciate all of your input and diligence and hard work. The next thing, we will ask Dr. Lauder to come to the podium for Policy 4700, which we pulled out of the consent agenda, and we will ask you to give us a presentation on Policy 4700.
Yeah, I think when we went over last time, there, there were no questions about the policy. It was just requested to move for a vote.
Okay.
So I'll certainly be glad to answer anything if you have any questions.
Does anybody have a specific question regarding this, this policy? And this is, has the, the, the directory information is the one, I think, and Carolyn, I'm gonna let you comment on it if you'd like, but I think Mr., we'll start with Mr.
Walter. Just what were the changes again?
The summary of the changes were that it modifies the list of directory information by adding diploma endorsements and clarifying that certifications refer to industry certifications, and now that becomes part of directory information, and then it just updates legal references and provides a hyperlink, so.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter, you, you're the one that asked this to be pulled out, so if you have a comment.
Yes, and you all know that me personally, I do not like this policy. They know I don't like it because of the data that we are asking. It is up to this board to decide what data is put into this. We have that option on the information that we can't ask for to be put for these children. And I just think that we, that we are asking for too much information, and that's why I do not agree with this policy, and I will be voting against it. So, that's just my opinion, I have one vote, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, and just, I wanted to clarify, and you, you can too if you want, this is, this is not information we're asking from the students. We get information from the students. This is what is made available if somebody asks us, or if we have to print a school play bill, or an athletic program, or something like that. So, I just wanna, you said ask, that we're asking for, this isn't information that we're asking for.
And there is a provision that parents can opt, can opt out of.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out, because there is a provision that parents can opt out if they so choose. So, okay, with, with that said, does anybody else have a comment they'd like to make? Dr. Phillips?
Okay, well, just looking through the list of information that is classified as directory information, at the elementary school level, I don't see anything that should be of any concern. At secondary level, I'm, I'm questioning why we would need to release a student's address and date of birth to the public. That's not necessary to tell them that this child is a member of the basketball team, or that they've gotten a scholarship to go to the university, or that they've graduated with honors from this, and attended this school from this date to that date. So, what, what's the motivation there? Why is that included?
Dr. Kirk just pointed out military need, and that's something that the military asked for, and, and it could be, when you say date of birth, for example, that could be information for a scholarship that, that an athletic scholarship, for example, may need to be verified date of birth to be able to release. Again, all this is information that sometimes, if you specify each individual, there's quite a bit of this information that you would have to, without this, you would not be able to get that person the scholarship, or at least that you would have to contact them individually each time to release that information, which can be huge, depending on the request.
Right, and, so those are good reasons, but I'm, I'm questioning why we need to have that as a blanket publicly available. I mean, if, if I'm understanding this right, I could, as a member of the public, I could walk in and say, "Well, I wanna know the address and the date of birth of, you know, student exits at this school," and according to board policy, you have to give it to me. I don't have to tell you why I need it, right?
I'll ask Ms. Stone to speak technically to that. I would say that, that's not, it's not that easy, and that doesn't happen, but she make an answer if technically that's the answer to your question.
So, this all falls under the federal law FERPA, and the federal law delineates that we're able to designate certain types of information as directory information so that we can easily release it without having to go to each parent every time a request is made. I do wanna call out that the military recruiter information and institutions of higher learning are automatically carved out of FERPA, and you'll see here in Section C, as required by law, names, addresses, and telephone numbers for secondary students shall be released upon request to recruiters in higher learning institutions regardless of whether or not it's directed, designated as directory information. So, that's already carved out. Where we are is, and you look at Part D, there's all requests for directory information must be submitted to the superintendent or designee for approval. This is something that we do receive and we do take seriously, and the information is not released without some care and consideration. One example of requests for directory information we may receive would be from, for example, the designated yearbook provider of a school, so that they can coordinate with the families in terms of yearbooks or graduation gowns or things like that. So, there is a approval request. Directory information is not handled in the same way that public records requests are handled in terms of sort of the automatic requirement to disclose. We are able to look at the institution who's making the request and make a determination as to whether or not it is appropriate, and there is grounds in here for the superintendent to formally establish regulations regarding the release of directory information regarding the types of organizations that are eligible to receive this and for what purpose. So, I do hope that answers your question in terms of how we do and don't handle the release of directory information on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you, Sarah. Jeff, do you have a follow-up to, to that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to reread this again. Superintendent shall employ reasonable methods to ensure that teachers and other school officials obtain access only to those educational records in which they have legitimate educational interests. Something like that stated for people other than teachers and other school officials? Sorry, I'm not seeing where it says, just because it's directory information and you ask for it, we don't have to give it to you.
It's in the bottom of page nine, subsection D, that the request must be submitted to the superintendent or designee for approval, and the superintendent's directed to establish regulations regarding the release of directory information, and it discusses what those regulations must include.
Okay, but those regulations are part of this policy. It's, we're, we're leaving that up to the discretion of the superintendent?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Harrison, you have any comments?
Well, we've had a lot of trouble with this policy. Not, I mean, trouble, but we've, we've gone around and around about this policy, and I gather that the policy as stated is within the law, but members of the board feel somewhat ill at ease about what it still encompasses. Should we take it back one more time? I mean, I don't mean to open up that can of worms, but if there's still anxiety about what the policy explicitly states, or doesn't clearly state to include or exclude, should we give this more consideration? I just...
We can certainly take back to the policy committee. I think the short answer, and I certainly want Ms. Stone to, to weigh in and correct me if I misspeak on anything, is that this type of information is, is something that we don't just give out to everybody. It's not like we're giving out to groups that wanna, you know, solicit or sell, but it, it does happen more often than people think. And I think Mr. Fail gave an example in our policy committee of some of the parents who had actually opted out, and because of the ramifications of that decision, they called and ultimately, and again, you step in and tell me if I'm wrong, ultimately said, "Hey, here's, here's some implications for that. If you really wanna opt out, your student's not gonna be listed in the yearbook." And across the board with everybody that he called, they said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, no, don't do that. I don't wanna be taken out of this information." So, even people who are highlighted and say, "Hey, I want to be removed," when it's pointed out to them what they will actually miss out on, they said, "Please, no, put me back in because of what I'm gonna lose." And I think a couple of his examples that he uses at the policy committee made everybody feel fine, that this was pretty standard information and information that the vast majority of people wanted to release.
Well, I trust you. I mean, ain't no doubt about that, and, and your discretion is, you know, is professional and well-thought-out in all cases, I'm very certain, but it's just that the policy, as a layperson or as a parent would read it, ain't too clear, for lack of a better way of putting it. It may, it may be very clear to educational professionals, but it's not especially explicit for a parent who would try to navigate through these, these terms.
The same language that was mentioned for the teachers and staff that Mr. Phillips just mentioned is perfectly appropriate to put in here, because we don't allow it to go out unless it suits educational purposes, and if we are ever in question, it always goes to the lawyers, every time.
Extensive and adequate review of these requests, again, I don't think anyone on the board disputes that.
But that language could make it a little stronger, make the board perhaps feel more comfortable, and still support that.
And, and Mr. Chair and Dr. Shepherd, I don't mean to open the can of worms, because we have tried to get through this policy several times in the last few months, but if it's feasible to give it another review, do so. If not, then let's vote on it as it is tonight and go forward. I'm, I'm not dead set on continuing review of the policy if it's not effective or efficient to do so.
That you take action on the changes that have been recommended to the policy. If you think the policy then needs to be changed in other ways, then bring it back and address those changes. But tonight, we're proposing, I think it's first read.
That's right.
The, the changes in red, and I haven't heard anyone dispute those. I know Ms. Carpenter's concerned about the policy in general.
Mine was just a general, and one of the things to, to say, when, when this was first brought up the very first time, this were, all the rest of you were on the board, one of the things we did do, we did move forward in our policy book about a parent being able to opt out. We moved it forward in our student manual, so parents were aware of that to make sure that they knew they had that ability to opt out, and we moved it up where it was more visible to the parent to know that they did have that option. And so, that was something that we did make it more visible to them, and so they know that they've got that option. So, and, and I wanna make sure you, you, you're aware of this as a board. This is just something I just have a real problem with.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I, I agree with Dr. Shepherd that the, the changes that we're talking about, we need to adopt. I mean, if we need to have further discussion about the policy as a whole, then, then the committee can do that and bring it to us, but I don't think we've looked at this numerous times in the last, I mean, this has to be renewed once a year, is that right? And we're just doing the renewal?
Yeah, well, this one's up. It's a policy that at times comes up because, as Ms. Stone said, FERPA may change, or there's some type of, you know, ultimately, the law doesn't change, but some kind of tweak for that. When that happens, sometimes it may have come in front of you just because there's a change in the legal reference or a hyperlink, but, so it's, it may have come up, but not what, not the changes that are recommended for this, if that's what your question is.
Well, no, I just, when was the last time this, that we even?
Um...
Oh, yeah, it is at the bottom.
Yeah.
Oh, it was just in August. Well, okay, I stand corrected, Mr. Harrison. You're right, it did come up.
Again, I, I understand the reasoning behind the recurring nature of this policy. It's a high, hydro-headed kind of thing that someone changes a comma in a federal or a state law, and we have to re-invoke this to, to mirror those changes.
Yeah, okay. Board members, this is an action item, so we need, I need a motion and a second.
Are you gonna let me talk?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about that whole side of the table. Go ahead, Mr. Schumaker.
This, this policy is to allow exceptions, so that on an exceptional basis, a parent can remove their child from it. If the district worked on the opposite, where the parent had to give permission, then we would have 30,000 permissions given every single year, and we would have reams of administrative nightmares going on, and someone would miss something, and something would be given out when it shouldn't have been. So, it's proper that the policy is done in an exception way. The other thing is, is, you know, when you talk about photographs and those types of things, in order for Ms. Boone or for a yearbook to publish a photograph, you have to have written permission, or you have to state that I'm going to do that. The other thing is, you have to, you have to go to the parent every time you have some type of photograph. So, if Ms. Boone and her advertisements, which she would probably get with a parent to say, "Oh, by the way, on our new billboard that's coming up, this child's picture's gonna be there. Do you have a problem with that child's picture?" And she would probably get reinforcement, even though the exception allows, I mean, even though this policy allows her to do that, I'm sure she would wanna make sure that that parent was comfortable with that child's photograph being somewhere in public view. The same thing goes with our annual report and some of those other things. So, I believe our, our staff is very professional in the way that they conduct themselves in this, and, and I believe that if a parent doesn't want it, then, then they're given the whole explanation as to what being an exception means to them, and I think we've covered that. And, and as long as they've been communicated, and the policy even says, "We don't have to go and directly communicate with every parent," it just says that we need to make sure that they're aware, in a mass-type distribution, that this policy's there and they have the option of taking it and being involved with it. We've, we've reviewed this policy over at least six times since 1985, and the revisions have been made up until this point. I just don't see where we're going. In March, we reviewed it, and in August, we reviewed it, and we didn't make massive changes. Ms. Carpenter has philosophical issues that prevent her from endorsing this, but the rest of us haven't had any philosophical issues. So, I think we should move forward and vote on this, and I'll make a motion that we accept this as noted.
Okay, there is a motion, but we're gonna let Mr. Walter make a comment.
I'll second.
And Mr. Walter has seconded it. So, there's a motion and a second that we accept Policy 4700. All those in favor, with the, the, the changes made, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Monroe, that's six to one, so that passes. So, we will, the board will now convene in closed session. So, I need a motion that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143.318.11A5, to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating, one, the price of, of price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease, and pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of us convening in closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This board is now in closed session.